Mr. Haney notified in advance and I think said at the last attention meeting, he would not be here this evening. Next we have the approval of minutes for Strategic Planning Committee meeting of June 11th, 2024. Regular meeting minutes of June 27th, 2024. Are there any errors, omissions, additions to those meeting minutes? There are none, those meeting minutes are standard approved. Next is audience participation. If you would like to address the Ironton City Council, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes to use.
Good evening, my name is Marion Tussie, 1507 Karen Street. And I did the last few meetings, I've been kind of hard on you over what's going on down in the valley. But today I want to acknowledge somebody that's really helped us out over the last few months, and that's John Stevens. I think he's working for Arcadius. But John really went, goes above and beyond. I've been able to call him, he calls back. He helped me get three people from Karen Street that are in their eighties that didn't understand the paper that was handed out, that they needed to move their cars this week. He helped today to get a fence down so we can get a little brain damaged boy back to the house per the state. So I just wanted to acknowledge John for that, and also like to acknowledge Mike Pemberton. He has been really good to come out, clear things for us and get, you know, call him, he's got some things done. One of the things I wanted to bring up is, I think the next time we go through anything like this, or if you're continuing down Central Meadows, it really would have been nice to have a town hall meeting to meet with the citizens. We have a really older population down there, and it would have been nice to have some town hall meetings to discuss, look after our neighbors. Thankfully, we've had a neighborhood watch, and that has helped to know the people and their ages and what their concerns and health issues are. One concern that I would like to bring up, and I did at the last meeting, but we didn't have enough people, was will we be spraying for mosquitoes down that way? I was out the other night, and they're really bad. We still have water that stands on Thomas Street. And I know every year the city, the town of the city usually sprays, so I'm asking if that's going to be happening. I'd also like to know if there's somewhere that we can get a copy of the timeline of the completion and the dates and the phases of what's going on down in the valley with the sewer project. We hear so many different things from so many different people, it'd be nice to know what the timeline is. And one example was this week, we were told to move our cars by the 10th. We made sure that happened, and there was nobody down there until 3 o'clock that afternoon. And then I contacted Mr. Woods and told him, hey, there's nobody down here, and that's what infuriates people. That's what makes them mad when you're not doing what you say, you know, that you're going to do. And I'm just, I'm just passing this on because this is what I, you know, a lot of things I hear, and it makes me upset too. You know, I have a disability, and it's hard for me to walk clear down the street, have to come all the way back, ruin your shoes. It's dirty, dusty, you feel like you've been through a war by the time you get down there, and you're going to, you know, a meeting or a work or... So it's another concern that was brought up. And one other thing I'd like to bring up was my brother-in-law is a retired teacher, and he went to the school board. And the school board didn't know what was going on down in Green Valley, so my concern is how are the school buses? Because we barely have enough room to get through on McPherson Street, a car, and it's like this. You're at an angle to get through. How is a school bus going to pick up the kids in August on those roads if they're not completed? If they're not passable? Because I don't think a school bus can make it what we're going through each and every day. And these are just some concerns, I know Kevin, you're here, and you're hearing, so that's all I have to say.
Ms. Tussie, before you, before you, Mayor, any update on mosquito spraying or will that be done down there?
I have to check on that.
Okay.
I do have, I've heard about the garbage pickup, which is a concern, I mean, first day of pickups since it started. They plan to pick them up, they're coming out of the way and a little time, but there's a way they're figuring out how to pick up garbage, but I find out about the mosquito.
And school buses, that's a, that's, that's an Arcadius and Mayor question to get sorted out with this, with the school board. But it's, it's good to bring it up proactively. And the other thing I'll say about the town hall meeting, I don't think it's a bad idea, but we have like, we have public forums on certain things sometimes, and I'm the only person that shows up. So it's only as good as like the people that show up. So we do try, and with this project, it was time sensitive with the funding, and so we did not have one. Not the imply that we did have one, but for other things, we have had those things, and I'm literally, or Mr. Haney when he was the vice mayor, are the only ones that show up. So we will try to do that for big projects like this that do impact lots of people. I can't guarantee that there'll be a turnout, but we will try to survive.
Yeah, and, and the, I talked to the fire chief, and he said that nobody consulted him on anything. Because I said, if there's a fire, how are you going to get a fire down there? You took a minute of my time. And he, he said, we have long hoses. Why, why wasn't he, you know, he's sending people down there now, I think because we've opened up that back field and we're parking back there that they weren't aware about. But that was a concern that they weren't even involved in, in all this planning, much less the public.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Doreen Foltz, I live on Karen Street. I'm here about the dust, the dirt. Since the last time I was here at a meeting, the roads are, they fixed all the potholes and stuff like that towards a little bit more travelable unless it rains a lot. One day the rain was over my knees, and I couldn't even get my car through. That's a problem. I feel that the railroad track exit should be opened so we have two exits. Because like she said, just my car barely gets through. I work at a court, I'm not going to go traipsing through mud to get to my car. I feel I shouldn't have to do that. I can't carry my groceries, I've got a torn rotor cap. They said get a wagon. Well, that tells me a whole lot. I mean, right now I can get in and out of my driveway, but soon I'm not. And I, I just feel we should have some extra water a month to spray our homes off, our cars off. The dust and the mud is unbelievable. My driveway's cracking. I know it needs to be better, but I'm just not happy. And I've called your office three times this week and never got a call back. And I've left messages, my phone number, and said, the last time I said it's kind of urgent that I get a call today, nothing. Every time I call your office, I never get a call back.
Ms. Foltz, this, this is a council meeting, I mean, he could chime in if he wants.
He's part of the city, correct?
He is part of the city, he's not part of the city council, and this is our meeting, so he can speak.
Well, I'm glad, thank you.
But, but I, I will suggest that, that you do contact Allard about, specifically about dust. Because they are the contractor, and they are responsible for cleanup and making sure that things are tidy when they leave, so...
Well, I mean, the dust is so thick. I mean, I have to pay for like thirty some dollars a month for a car wash, because my car's so filthy every day in the mud. I can't afford to spray my house off, because every water goes through, it's taken through the sewer, which is a very high now.
Have you contacted Allard?
No.
I would start with them.
So, and then I can't park on my street with my car insurance. I think one of you all might be an insurance agent, I'm not sure, but I'm thinking somebody told me that. But if my car's not in my dwelling at night, and I'm at my dwelling, my car's not covered if it gets hit or anything. And I'm not turning it in on my insurance for my insurance to go up if something happens to my vehicle, so my vehicle, um... And I'm not comfortable having to walk three or four blocks every morning and every night to, to get to work.
I understand.
So I want to know what, what we're to do. And how long can we not park on Karen Street, or anything like that?
I don't have those answers, you'll have to ask Allard Construction and Arcadius.
I talked to John Stevens, and he's not allowed to tell us timelines, which you all had told us that the last time I was here and that everybody was here.
Mr. Haney told me that, I, I was out at the last meeting, I was out of town. Mr. Haney told me that, that goal was to try to put out a weekly timeline, because...
Where do you find us that?
The text service.
I don't have that. Thank you.
My name is John Krantz, and I'm here once again on the situation on Clinton Street. Has anything been done, resolved on this? He went ahead and put the fence up, and now, today alone, there was four squads, had to come up our alley, and numerous, you know, delivery trucks. If they're not going to do nothing, you know, about Clinton Street, it don't look like it's going to happen, because this has gone on for months. And they went ahead and let him put the fence up, and I'd like to get our alley, but, you know, blacktopped. Because if you come up and look at it, we have got big ruts in it now where these vehicles is going up and down. We was told that the city was going to come up and look at it, but I have not seen them yet, you know, done up.
And Mr. Krantz, I don't know if you were here the last time, that, I don't, I don't recall who was here the last time, but I've told whoever came up and talked about it, that we are doing things in the background. They, I forgot to reset that. We, we are doing things in the background that involve, that involve litigation and, and legal things that we can't discuss in public. I, I think the mayor may have, may have an update at least on part of it that he can share publicly. But I, but I promise you that ev- every, I think I speak for it, everyone up here has been by that and seen that situation, and knows that it's not a good thing. And so it, it's the intent of this body to make sure that something is done to remedy that. But there are things going on that we can't talk about and that we can't discuss in an open meeting because they involve lawsuits.
Yeah.
But the mayor can, he had his hand up, I think he...
Do you say, can you explain?
Can you explain that part?
All of it?
I'll explain all of it, I'll explain where we're at in process.
Oh, so to go through that process, we have to survey the property that is in question. And we are having that done, it's already started. They have to put that together, and then at that point, we're going to keep appraisals on it, and then we start the legal process. It is a lengthy process of doing this. That big part is making sure we know what the boundaries are, having that survey, getting those plans, getting that appraised, and then moving forward on the legal action of that property that's in question.
And that's on, and that's on both sides of the street too, Mr. Krantz.
Right.
So, so it involves not only cooperation and or us paying to get that part of the street back, but also Harbor Health doing their part as well, which I'm assuming that they will. But we can't assume anything when it comes to property lines and that kind of thing, so...
Okay, can anything be done with our alley? See, I park our car in my garage, and when I pull out of it, you know, if it rains, I'm going to a muddle.
Yeah, and since that has been more highly trafficked, I think it would be wise for us to do that. I can't speak for the mayor and the day-to-day and what he does with the street department, but I, I'm sure he's heard it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, it's between 10 and 11.
Yeah.
They probably haven't sprayed it.
I know, you know, the sanitation truck, they're having to back up, all the way back up the alley to start picking up and then come out.
Yeah, it's not intended for ambulances and fire trucks.
We had a tractor, tractor last week. He tried, you know, to back up, but there wasn't enough room for him. If he had kept going, he had took the garage down.
Well, I hope that I've given you as much information as I can. But just, but just know that we, that we are working on it, even though we may not be able to talk about it, we are working on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael Luke, 1529 South Fifth. So I'm going to ask these questions as best I can from a council perspective, so I don't get shut down on the enforcement side. But this is the only public forum around, so please bear with me on this. In the ordinances, well, first of all, I want to ask, how many people have the council funded for the code enforcement department?
One and a half.
Just depends what type of code enforcement.
Housing, dilapidated, yeah, building.
Slow light. Because I've got two.
Like houses falling down.
Yeah, I've got two, one and a half actually.
One and a half, okay, so that's, I wanted to make sure I kept this on the council level. 1535 South Fifth Street, two houses from mine is falling down, it has been condemned for over a year. And that's it. The roof's coming off, there's pigeons flying in the house, which is a problem for the whole neighborhood.
I hear about this every day, Mike.
I think you do, but you don't live there.
My mom lives right behind it, so I have to hear about this every day.
Well, pigeons crap on my food, so, so, yours as well.
Yeah, yours did.
So my questions are from, and I couldn't find anything in the ordinances, what happens next? It says that there should be fines placed every year, $200, then it goes to $400, then to $800, then to $16, up to $3,200, and it's maxed out. I'm going to guess that that hasn't happened, but it did change hands, so I can't figure out that it's sold. But I don't think any of that's happened, but what happens after that? In the code.
That, what you were saying, that's a vacant property register.
Well, which is, covers buildings residential, so...
That's several commendations, or the condemnation that's...
It's still vacant.
You say condemned.
It's, it's, it's been condemned.
Yeah, so that has this, once it's served, that you have to give it so many services.
Over a year.
Changed hands, and we have to have service that new person.
Especially if it wanted changed hands, Mike, if they've paid the buildings.
Also, some of the, on some of these is there was a lot of money, which if you remember correctly, we got like ten, fifteen or more commendations funded by the state recently, and that held up quite a few of those, and so we're seeing whatever was left, we take our money.
I missed like $200 from buying it somehow, and I still don't tear it down, so, but that didn't go through, so I'm just trying to follow up. From an ordinance perspective also though, so there is nothing that happens next. Is it, does a property, and maybe Brigham can answer this, does owning a property that is falling down, at some point, can it become a criminal issue?
Somebody gets hurt.
If somebody, or do you have to sue if somebody gets hurt?
Luckily it's suit, not a criminal.
You couldn't make, the fact that they're completely neglecting something, something.
Very rarely would that be criminal. But I'm not saying never, if the house was falling to kill someone, it was, you know, there are negligent homicide offenses, but most criminal offenses are known for purpose, so there's mental capability associated with criminal.
So in the nuisance ordinance, it says, Section P, any condition that creates a danger to the public of a building. So would this follow under that, because it's certainly a danger?
Certainly follow, which is what?
Yeah, I just, I need something to happen in this corner.
The nuisance, the nuisance ordinance is triggered by two or more police reports, I believe. And when we, is that right, Nate? Because we, we worked them on.
I thought it was two filth reports.
No, I think there's...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's ever been executed, so probably no man knows how to work it, but...
It was done when Pam was, was the police chief, Mike, and so, and, and it was, she did have a law of responding to...
I asked her several times, I don't believe that, but that's okay.
She did, she did have, I promise you can, now, I can't speak to whether Captain Johnson does that or not.
No, I was told to get a full year request, and I would think that I wouldn't have to do that, I mean, I could, but... And that's fine, I just wanted to, I would like for you guys to investigate, if you can go like a step further somehow, ordinances.
One of the ordinances had to initiate the condemnation of it, so...
Me call, so I'll tell you what I've done. Every day, not every day, every three days, I'm going into the website to make a complaint where it says, make file complaint with the code, every day, every three days I'm doing that, and it's sitting there.
If it's been condemned, it's just waiting.
But I had, my problem is I had no response.
Any response?
Okay.
Okay. If it's been condemned, it's waiting to be demolished, or it's waiting that process time for service and all of that. So if it's switched hands recently, then you had to re-service them. Sometimes if it's returned mail, we have to do it twice for it to count as service. But in order for it to be torn down, we have to get through that process of the timing. And once we tear it down, that's the last process.
Okay, first two questions.
Chris, I'll ask your permission process. This, this situation, not for this specific progress, there's a semi-resident of Ironton that has a very similar issue that I was going to bring out during this, ladies and gentlemen, to that, or here's the technical.
Yeah, I think, I think it's fine, I think it's fine, I think, yeah, because I think it's a, I think it exposes a larger issue of the, of the carryout, and we probably do need to discuss it, yeah.
Okay. Nate?
Nate. Oh, you're talking about the, putting our council hat on. I do want to say, as the mayor discussed, the land bank has funded some demolitions, but as far as the city, that doesn't have to do anything with city money.
Right.
But the city, we have allocated $100,000 in demolition fund for demolitions, so I want to...
No, I, I, that's great, as far as, because I'm all for, you don't have to tear down one in my neighborhood first, I don't care. This one's got, this one's a problem.
So it's whatever ones don't get funded by that money is what we try to use our...
I would...
Well, we've had fifteen at least in the past year, so, and they've got some money now, so we're just waiting on the...
I'd just like to know, I would buy, I would buy the house and tear it down, but...
Buy it.
The guy who's a national.
Thank you.
Oh, and the button to select pay invoices is not working, because I've tried every browser I have. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thanks.
Moving on to communications, there are none, reports there are none. Does the clerk please give ordinance 2429 first reading by title?
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, Ohio for the fiscal year in December 31, 2024, and requiring emergency second reading.
Bob.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules on ordinance 2429 and give it second, third reading by title only.
Jake.
I'll second that, and make mention that I was given the favorable recommendation by Father Danes.
Thank you, sir. Call call.
Brown.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Juan.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Sir clerk, please give ordinance 2429 second or third reading by title.
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, Ohio for the fiscal year in December 31, 2024, and requiring emergency second reading. Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, Ohio for the fiscal year in December 31, 2024, and requiring emergency third reading.
Bob.
Make motion to adopt ordinance 2429.
Jake.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Remember, just to make part of the record as well, that there was an...
Just remember, um, just to make part of the record as well, that there was an error on page 22 of that budget that John provided a, um, amended page for page 22, just so that it's part of the record. Um, it will be on the clean copy that's signed into legislation. Roll call please.
Graham.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Ordinance 2429 is adopted. Moving on to resolutions. Um, if the clerk could please give resolution 2427 reading by title.
Participation in the program national, your decision, requiring emergency.
Bob.
I'll make motion that we pass resolution number 2427.
Chris.
I'll say.
Any discussion? Regime, anything?
Uh, this is, we have to join us. We want to join it. It's part of the equal way litigation. Uh, our national council recommends it. It's all recommended.
Roll call.
Graham.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Resolution 2427 passes. If the clerk could please give resolution 2428 reading by title.
Establishing salaries for non-union employees in requiring emergency.
Bob.
Make motion that we pass resolution 2428.
Jacob.
I'll say. And I'll mention that it was given a favorable recommendation by finance.
Thanks, sir. Roll call please.
Graham.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Resolution 2428 passes. Moving on, Ms. Laney, Mr. Perry, I told you you could resume that.
Thank you.
And that I have to get you back on to what your line of thought was. I think that it's probably worth us collectively, you, I, maybe, um, ask, forming a question and sending it to the solicitors about next steps. Um, when it comes to combinations, nuisance properties, et cetera, et cetera, and, um, so that we can have some definitive answers, because it seems like this is a reword. Was that your line of thought as well? It, it was, uh, and the, uh, the other thought that I had, Mr. Harvey, is, um, I'm not sure if this would ever enter the realm of public utilities. Because of sewage sanitation, rotting, deteriorating homes causing issues with all of the four mentioned things. So I ended up, that was something that you, we know better than I, that that might be something that you see maybe to consider.
I, I think we've addressed that with vacant property registration, because they still pay, um, those, they still pay those utilities for runoff and, or-
Or, or do that, but yes.
Well, I mean, it's assessed.
Correct, yeah. Um, so the specific resident is Connor Markins. Uh, if you guys remember this time last year, his mother was trying to help you with the, um, the vacant property, uh, directly next to 1923 Liberty Avenue, uh, former Fishman property. It's, uh, 1919. Um, he has his property in 1923 for sale and, um, he and his realtor, both of them, they have, uh, an exacerbated issue and did a house, sold one because of the house right next door and actually shared driveway with this one. And there's a problem with checking in on this at some point. I think there may have been drugs. It speculated that they were cooking death in that house at some point. So there are multiple other issues. Um, I don't know if this is a situation where, um, the land bank has been involved if, and I know these are all things that are out or per view specifically, but, um, they, uh, Connor and his realtor are just asking for whatever help the city can provide for the rest of legislation from this body enforcement through the executive office. However, it is, uh, he's currently in Florida, uh, watching that meeting tonight. So I'm starting to have a steep audit we have. And his realtors in the Texas, as concerned in 1923 Liberty Avenue, Irons and, uh, currently have the property listed in 1919 Liberty Avenue. Uh, also had a deal with our estate agent. We feel that we're receiving very negative feedback through property located next door, which has been collected, shares driveway with this property. Uh, we have negative feedback from all of the showings and the other realtors. Uh, and they do not have specific answers to that.
If you remember Brad contacted you, he mentioned that-
For like the last four years.
And it's one we always have to have cut, maybe assess the property taxes. So it's might be one that we've already, like, so once we have so much assessed, we, it's the same people over and over we go after property, but I don't know if it's redeemable or not.
Okay. So I guess my question is, please, I'm sorry, uh, this is probably this year too. Would this be another prime example of our CIC stepping in to help alleviate the situation? You know, I mean, it's land changes. There are four or five leans on this property, property taxes, but then, the here home has a lien against it. For two or three or four other entities have a lien on this property. So at some point, I think we just got to pull the plug and say, well, that's enough. Whether it's, you know, taken by, have a domain, have a CIC come in. I'm, I'm just throwing ideas out there to specifically help these folks because they reached out to me. But I think it would also give us kind of a good running start on, on helping the air, getting some of these other things taken care of as well.
It, it's no doubt, like, it has been for a long, long time and so, I mean, we'll do what we can on our end. I'll, I'll put it on my, my same's list.
I'm pretty sure they're familiar with that property. Like I said, we usually have to have a cut.
Yeah. Nate?
Uh, a few things. Um, this is for Brigham. I have, I've got the four requests for opinions here. I normally would type this out and send it to you, but I want to have a part of the minutes because it's been brought up by residents.
You also talked about-
I'll do both. I'll do both. Uh, is there any, uh, existing ordinance regulating or prohibiting, um, aggressive or vicious animals?
Yes.
The number of animals located on a property kennels in residential area and encampments or tents located on public property. Nate, I'd also like to make a motion to make part, accept and make part of the minutes, the five year forecast and the May 2024 financials submitted by Mr. Will.
I'll say.
I'll say.
Roll call.
Graham.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
I know you had your hand up, Mayor, but, um, regarding the aggressive and vicious animals, I, I talked to that person. I know exactly who you're talking about. And I, the follow-up I had was actually done something to a human being. Answer was no. So I referred him on to Lawrence County, um, animal control, just to see what next steps were to, to report whatever it was that they, that was deemed aggressive. Um, so that one specific case, I know what you're talking about, but, um, they have not had any kind of human attack, but they're somehow a- aggressive. So I, I referred that person to animal control.
I'll send that to you. I just wanted to have a part of that.
So I was going to save you some time because we, I think, helped with all of them. Uh, Joe left, you know, ORC that, because we did have ordinance on particular things, but for like the kennels, they have to, if it's over, I think, five, they have to have it. And, um, what was the other one? Vicious animals.
Vicious animals and kennels are controlled by a body.
Yeah, sir. We've cited these people already in the court and everything. Joe was saying if we would like, he said, you know, because we cite ORC, it has to go into the state if you would like to mimic those types of ordinance is to have them here and limit the amount to. As well, but I do know that we don't think we have like a limitation. What we've ran into is like 15, um, bird, bird dogs, rabbit dogs that are not kennel licensed. We've been able to get rid of five or two and they've caused a lot of noise in the neighborhoods. Yeah, we were going to approach him with a base, very much got to take care of the, the two issues that we've had with the run into with the amount of, of kennel box. But we did have to go to ORC. We didn't have anything particularly in our ordinances.
It would just be redundant unless they wanted to make it more stringent, right?
Yes.
Well, doesn't, when you cite ORC, that money goes to the state, right?
Versus the-
Yeah.
Versus the city.
I do not know that.
I think that's the way it is on citations.
Yeah, that's what these are.
Yeah, like, uh, motor vehicle violations, et cetera.
That's why we have a lot of the same ordinance as, as ORC. Because it stays here in the city if we cite the city ordinance versus the Ohio vice.
Figure question for clerk, course.
If you want to get with Joe, though, he has probably one answers to some of those questions.
Yeah, with residential camping.
I don't know anything about.
Okay.
That was specifically Moulton Field, Moulton Field.
On public property.
Yeah.
But you have to put those in the name.
I will put them in the name. And then, uh, I'm sorry, when I, if there's no more Ms. Laney's, I will make a motion for executive session.
I'd like to tack on to Ms. Laney's there, just certainly back to the vacant property. Do we have any, like, is there any database where we can check updates on a specific property? Or is it even coming across?
We have a list of properties that we mailed to vacant property registry forms to. You can also check and see which ones are taken. That's how we, we cross-reference the water requirement. Actually, once, how the act accounts what does.
That's specific to vacant property registry. The nuisance property registry are supposed to be with the police office, right?
Yeah, and when you say those nuisance properties were more so crime related.
Well, they were. It was, yeah, it was, it was a general nuisance.
So those are two different things.
Yeah.
But nuisance property could be just ugly, blighted property too. But I think the ordinance you were referring to about instances, that was where you had squatters, drug activity or-
Yes. Over those, yes, yes. Yes. But that is supposed to be held in the police department, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Nate?
I'd like to make the motion to get executive session to discuss ongoing litigation with solicitor, finance director, mayor, John Haskins, Kevin Wood, James Kaisley. No action followed.
Randy Stoll.
Randy Stoll.
I'll say. Mr. Perry. Roll call please.
Graham.
Aye.
Cleary.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Thank you all. We are adjourned.